Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Please rise to the podium for the questions and remarks by myself.
I just wanted to take a minute to note the passing of a prominent Omaha citizen. Several of us were at the funeral services for Bruce Larson today. And as you may know, he was a prominent banker in town, successful businessperson, and led First National Bank for decades, one of Omaha's largest employers. He left an indelible mark upon our community just walking through the services. You could see his impact everywhere. And of course, maybe most notably, First National Tower, which was a huge reinvestment in our downtown area and left us in the position where we are now of lots of more investment in downtown Omaha. I was speaking with his daughter last night, and she said even at that time, his wish was that someone else would build another tower in downtown Omaha, so we'd have three and one that's larger than his. And of course, that's about to happen. But even above all that, he was a philanthropist in our city, in our state, Lawrence and Gardens, Clarkson Hospital, countless projects that wouldn't have happened without him. He was the Danish Consul of Nebraska, which was important to me, as we always talked about our Danish heritage together. And then, I think most importantly, a really great father, husband, and grandpa, and one of the nicest guys you'll ever meet. So those qualities are hard to find these days, and certainly we're celebrating in terms of his commitment to our community and to Omaha and the legacy he leaves with his kids, who are doing the exact same thing, carrying on the tradition of their family who has been in Omaha literally since its founding. So a really notable service today, and I thought it was worth mentioning him and our thoughts and prayers to the family today. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the open meeting act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate having you here today. We look forward to your remarks and input on our various items. I would encourage you to turn your cell phones off, or at least to vibrate. We do have two items before we start today, and the first is, I'm going to recognize Councilmember Melton to provide us PSA regarding some concerning law enforcement issues.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I appreciate this opportunity. And this is one time I'm going to ask anybody in the media, please capture this. This is a public service announcement. Over the last couple of weeks, I have had clients and constituents who were called by people claiming to be Douglas County sheriffs, telling them they had a warrant out for their arrest for missing federal jury duty. According to the people I talked to, they were extremely convincing. They gave a name of a sheriff, and they provided the address of the Douglas County Sheriff's Office off 156th and Maple, where they needed to report after paying their money at a kiosk at one of our local grocery stores. They were extremely believable. I can tell you the one woman I talked to, I've known for a long time. She's been a client of mine for many years. She's not gullible. She's not an idiot. They were so convincing. They told her they didn't go into law enforcement. They went into law enforcement to help people, and they were trying to help her so that she wouldn't go to jail. They knew she had kids. They knew where she worked. They knew a lot of information about her, and that's why she was so convinced. She was able to get in touch with, by the way, this happened during one of our last city council meetings, she was able to get in touch with one of my partners who told her it was a scam. She had the money, and she was on her way to pay it. Unfortunately, another woman, who is in my district, she paid $6,000, then reported to the Douglas County Sheriff's Office as she was told to do, and they informed her it was a scam, but they tell you you have to pay in cash. There are Douglas County sheriffs in this room right now, none of which will contact you or call you to solicit bond money. Am I correct, deputies? Okay, so no matter what the person says or what they sound like, a sheriff will never contact you to tell you to come post your own bail. Never go pay bail money like that. At a kiosk, bail will be paid down at the correctional center or somewhere else, depending on whether it's federal or county charges. But definitely, all you have to do is call the police department, OPD, 911, the sheriff's office. If anyone calls you and you think you might have a warrant, you can call and find out if you do. Please, please don't fall for the scam. They're doing it to people in Omaha right now, and I just don't want any of our citizens to fall for it. It's actually happening all over the country, when you look it up, but it's happening right here in Omaha. So please, 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 don't let yourself or somebody you love or know fall for this scam. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'll recognize Councilmember Bagley for a proclamation for Dave Larson. And Dave, if you'd like to come down to the podium, we'll have Councilmember Bagley read the proclamation and honor you appropriately.
Thanks, Council President Besser, Senator. Councilmember Melton for that important announcement for the community. So this is a great honor for me, David Larson. Whereas Dave Larson grew up in South Omaha and attended Mason Grade School, graduated from Central High School in 1962, and from the University of Omaha in 1966 with the Bachelor's of Science in Business Administration. And whereas in 1961, while still in high school, David began a 63-year career as a volunteer youth baseball coach for schools throughout the Omaha metro, including St. Peter's Grade School, St. Cecilia's Grade School, Cathedral High School, Gretna Summer American Legion, Artington Summer American Legion, and Mary R. Queen School. And whereas David understands the importance of giving back to the community, whether as a 16-year mentor for at-risk youth, big brothers, big sisters of the Midlands, or as a 38-year member of the I-80 Cosmopolitan Club of Omaha, supporting diabetes research and hosting participating teams at the College World Series since 2000. And whereas David lived his life according to the seven habits of a better baseball player: the habit of doing extra work outside of practice, the habit of studying games, not just watching them, the habit of learning from your mistakes, the habit of having confidence in yourself, the habit of hustling down the line, the habit of practicing with a purpose, and the habit of playing with passion. And whereas, like the game of baseball so dear to him, David's commitment to the Omaha community is timeless and to be savored, appreciated, and enjoyed. Now therefore, be it resolved that on the occasion of his 80th birthday, the City of Omaha officially designates Sunday, March 3, 2024, as David Larson Day in Omaha, Nebraska. In witness whereof, we have set our hands and cause the official seal of the city to be affixed on this 27th day of February 2024. David L., as we call you, it's a great honor to give you that fine proclamation from the heart, and I can tell you from all the Cathedral kids and all the schools that were mentioned, since we outed you on your age a little bit, it's been great knowing you all these decades, and not only for your birthday, but this is about your community service. With everything we mentioned in the proclamation, you quietly give back to your community, and the ripples of that over those decades, it's felt. And it's going to be great to honor you on Sunday down at Field Club, where there's going to be a pretty good gathering of old war stories of broken-down pitchers like myself that threw a little soft, didn't hit as hard as I should have, but I took great advice from you, and I enjoyed all of our time together. And I can tell you, you mentioned that you have an older brother that's going to be coming into town this weekend that's 92 on the day after your birthday. And as I always like to say, we deal with a lot of things in the city on many levels, and my favorite part is recognizing people that give back to the community, and they give back, you can say that David Larson lives a life well-lived. And judging by your older brother Herb, there's several years left to you, so the floor is yours, and thank you for coming down today, Dave.
Thank you, Dan. If I'd have worked a little harder with you, I know you could have made the major leagues.
I know, I know. I'll work on it, too.
But this is an unexpected pleasure to have this proclamation given to me and the recognition for things that I did that just seemed like the things to do when I was involved with them. Even the hours of work and dedication that people put into things like this, even when you don't get paid for them, the rewards are many and memorable and will stay with me for the rest of my life. So I really appreciate you all taking the time to do this, and you especially, Dan, to recognize this. But I got more pleasure out of the coaching and the mentoring and the work with our Cosmopolitan Club, that more pleasure out of doing those things. And so it was certainly not work, and I will be smiling from now on, just remembering all of those things. So thank you again for the recognition. I appreciate it greatly.
Thanks, David. Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thanks for being here. I'm clerk.
Item six, to consider a Class I liquor license for Barbecue Chicken located at 2521 South 132nd Street.
Public hearing and vote on number six is today. We have the applicant by Zoom. We'll get you off mute here in a second. Okay, try that.
Hello.
Hi there. Name and address, please.
Barbecue Chicken, 2521 South 132nd Street.
Okay. And your name, please, for the record.
Sean Ann.
All right. And then just here to answer questions.
Hey.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug. Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item seven, to consider a Class B liquor license for Amigos Market located at 2104 Q Street.
Public hearing and vote on number seven is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? I'm not going to close the public hearing yet, in case there's a council member who feels this applicant should be here. We do generally require that.
Is nobody here?
There is time to lay it over.
Okay, let's lay it over to prescript.
One week?
One week.
Okay.
And they'll get notice it was laid over. The other reason? That's a motion. Thank you. Thank you.
There's a motion to lay over one week and continue public hearing?
Okay, and this will be to the March 5 meeting.
March 5?
Yep.
Thank you. Roll call.
Hug. Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item eight, a resolution to approve the final plat for Exarban Center, replat five, located northwest of 70th and Pine Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, I'm Chaz DeVetter with LFS, representing LFS AK, 11506 Nicholas Street, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug. Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item nine, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Starwood South, replat four, located at 6609 North 99th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number nine is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Motion a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug. Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 10, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Fort Omaha Expansion, replat one, located northwest of 30th Street and Sorensen Parkway. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 10 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion to approve and a second. Mr. Hug, you're recognized.
I just, I know it says that this is requested by Metropolitan Community College because it says the applicant is, but I just want to confirm that the college did ask for this to be replat. Am I right?
Mr. Fanslow is behind you there.
I'm here. Dave Fanslow, City Planning, yes, the applicant. For our Metropolitan Community College is the applicant, and they've requested the plat.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug. Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 11, an ordinance to approve a PUR overlay district located at 3204 North 16th Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Bees, communications, and opposition.
This item was postponed from the February 13 meeting. The vote is today. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
I will wait till the people that... Thank you.
You can recognize someone to speak, but otherwise, it's not a public hearing today.
Okay. Mr. Curry, if you would.
Yes. Hello, everyone, council. Fanslow, how you doing, sir? Well, we took the advice of...
Just your name and address again.
Yes, I'm sorry. Don Curry, 3324 North 16th Street, representing the developer and general contractor of this project.
Thanks.
We took the advice of the council and took the two-week layover to meet with the community. We had a community engagement meeting yesterday, and that went pretty well from the standpoint of everyone left the meeting in agreement to us moving forward on 16th and Spencer.
Thank you. Can you sharpen your view there? Thank you.
Yeah, just on top there.
So the feedback that we got back from the community, this has yet to be discussed with planning, but instead of us showing the flat roof, which you see here, and this is the south elevation of the property, suggestion from the community that we actually show a piece in the front of the building that kind of gives us the view of the roof being sloped. So last night, Barbara went back to the lab and added that to the proposal. And as I said, we have not ran this by planning yet, but hopefully they'll be in approval of this minor amendment, if you will.
Okay, and I didn't have any other questions. Ms. Weston, can you go ahead and have a seat? Ms. Weston, would you like to come up and say a few words, please?
Cheryl Weston, 1822 Emmett Street. I did attend the meeting, and as Mr. Curry said, it was appreciated from the council to have laid this over and given an opportunity to have engagement. Mr. Curry was receptive to that, and we came up with that we were, with this new plan change, that we felt that that would be appropriate. As I said from the very beginning, the community is always wanting new development and housing in our area, and I think Mr. Curry has come to that conclusion. And I just wanted to say that that little point there makes a tremendous difference. It does bring it into the look of the neighborhood just by adding that pitch roof, that facade of it. And in talking with him, we asked that there might be some a little bit more decorative around that top, and he said he thought that that could be done, and if that was approved by planning, he was willing to do that. So I stand here in support of Mr. Curry for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Curry, if you don't mind stepping back up. Mr. Curry, I would like to personally thank you for working with the neighborhood in terms of working things out so that everyone and everybody was on board with this project. Obviously, this is going to be a huge impact to our area, to the community, and again, I just want to give you a round of applause for being patient and working through this. I am in full support of this. Motion to approve.
Thanks a lot.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Thank you. I think I'll start with, so first of all, there was plenty of opportunity for public engagement. This went through Planning Board, there was notification sent out, there was a public hearing of Planning Board, we had a public hearing on this item, too. What we were asked to consider, and I'll ask Mr. Fanslow a question here in a second, what we were asked to consider was what the Planning Board passed, which is a PUR. So what is now being shown, I'm guessing, this is the first time even the Planning Department has seen this. Am I correct, Don?
Yes, sir.
And what I, here's my question, Mr. Fanslow. This might be considered a minor amendment to a PUR and therefore could be handled administratively, or it could be a major amendment to a PUR, which therefore would require it to go back through Planning Board and then back to City Council, which again would add probably another three months to the project, Don. So let me first ask, Mr. Fanslow, would this be considered a minor or a major amendment to a PUR?
Dave Fanslow, City Planning, you are correct. This is the first time I've seen this, so it's maybe a little difficult for me to be able to say would it be a major or minor. So I think I'll refrain from giving that opinion until I, unless I'm given the opportunity to take a look at it further, but I mean, it's, I say that, but it seems minor, it's...
Right, but I mean, and I didn't mean to, I didn't think that I would put you on the spot for an answer, because I think your initial reaction is exactly that. I think it needs, it would need to be reviewed. So I'm of the mind to pass the PUR that's in front of us, and if Mr. Curry would like to bring this back to the Planning Department with the original PUR that we have on our agenda to approve, and then go through the process of the Planning Department, we can't approve this plan today.
Yeah, for sure. I understand that.
It has not been reviewed by the Planning Department. It's not what the Planning Board passed. It is not what is on our agenda to consider. And I am not going to make, I'm not going to vote on a change to a PUR that the Planning Board's already passed, not knowing whether it's a minor amendment or a major amendment. And either case, that if it's a minor amendment, it still has to be done administratively through the Planning Department. We can't, we don't have that authority here.
Yes, I completely understood that.
So I would recommend that we would pass the PUR that is on our agenda, and if this is a plan that Mr. Curry, and we have you on the record, if this is a plan that Mr. Curry would then like to present to the Planning Department and ask for an amendment to the PUR, be it, if it's administrative, or if it's a minor, Don, it could be done quickly. If it's a major amendment, it's going to add months to your project, so just know that. So if the motion is to approve what is on our agenda, which is what I think the responsible thing for this body to do would be, I would be supportive of that. But if the motion is to approve this plan presented to us today, which has not been vetted by the Planning Department nor considered by the Planning Board, I'm not going to support that.
Thank you. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. Well, it was my understanding that the motion was to approve this agenda item, and that's what I seconded. So I guess I would just want to point a clarification. The motion and the second was this agenda item. There were no amendments. Is that correct?
That's my understanding. Ms. Johnson, was that your intention?
That was my intentions.
Okay.
Just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
So I'm sorry, I wanted to be clear. Councilmember Johnson, you said that was your intention to go with the original plan, not what's presented here? Well, I asked for clarification, please. All right, thank you.
I believe, for clarity for council members, I believe the motion is to approve the agenda item as presented, seconded by Councilmember Melton. Understanding there's an interest in this compromise, it obviously does have to get approved, reviewed by the Planning Department in this context. It's likely to be a minor amendment, but that needs to be determined. And if that's determined to be something different, then we'll have a different process around that. Would that be an accurate way to describe that, Mr. Fanslow? Yes, that's accurate. Is that your understanding, too, Mr. Curry?
Yes, sir. We just really wanted to show what we came up with, you know, in coordination with the community, and truly understood that this would have to be ran by planning before it was anything that we proceeded on.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
So there's a motion and a second to that effect. There's no further lights. Roll call.
Hug. Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Item 12, an ordinance to rezone property located at 1213 Jones Street. From DS District to CBD District, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 12 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. There's a motion and a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug. Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 13, an ordinance to rezone property located at 7802 Haskell Street. From DR District to R4 District, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number 13 is today. Proponents, please. Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed. Motion a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug. Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Excellent.
Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
Public hearings on agenda items 14 through 17 were held on February 13. There's no further lights. Is there a motion? Motion a second to approve. Roll call.
Hug. Johnson, Melton, Rowe, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
The public hearings on agenda items 18 through 66 are today. If you wish to address the council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. These are items 18 through 66.
Good afternoon, members of the council. Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director.
Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director, here to speak on, as a proponent for item number 64, with the construction agreement for the Exarban Curling, with the Exarban Curling Association. We first made a connection with the Exarban Curling Association back in the middle of 2021 and had an opportunity to discuss an idea and a concept. This was based in the momentum and the excitement around Omaha hosting the Olympic Curling Trials. And that was definitely part of what inspired the discussion of further opportunity. We also were inspired and excited about the chance to have something that was another recreation amenity, another opportunity to engage people, something that was multi-generational and highly inclusive. From there, we moved to developments upon identifying this as a potential positive and quality concept of addition for our system, development of an RFP. And we reached out both locally and nationally to potential partner groups. And after successful completion of the process, only the Exarban Curling Association submitted and responded to that. And we moved forward with their successful submission. From there, we reviewed potential possible locations and identified the spot that we're working with them now through this agreement at Tranquility Park near the Moylan Ice Rink, the connectivity, the synergy with another ice facility and a location that we thought fit in well with the theme of provision of Tranquility Park as a whole. And over about a 12 to 15 month period now, we've been in negotiation or discussion about the potential activation of this agreement for construction of the facility. What I will highlight is that the city has identified the parking directly in front of, or what would be to the east of the entrance of the Moylan skating facility as a point of improvement that we would pay for through Parks and Recreation in our capital improvement budget. But this would also include the expansion of parking to support the addition of the facility. This overlapped well with the concept that we were already discussing prior to even the idea of the facility for curling being specifically added in this location, so something we think is a natural fit. And with that, I'll pass it on to the representatives of the Exarban Curling Association, who are here to share more about the vision of the project.
Push it all the way up there, Nick.
Good afternoon, members of the City Council. My name is Nick Skorsec. My address is 6179 Walnut Street. I'm speaking in support of consent agenda item number 64. And on behalf of Exarban Curling, a nonprofit 501(c)(3) community organization that has been facilitating the Olympic sport of curling in the Omaha area since 1958. Our vision is to make curling a lifelong sport that can be enjoyed by all ages, skill levels, and physical abilities, and utilize curling as a mean, means of building social bonds in our community. For folks who may not be super familiar with curling, it is the fastest growing winter Olympic sport. It's one of the only competitive sports where you can have a child, a parent, a grandparent, and a person utilizing a wheelchair playing simultaneously together. So we love to say that our sport is an inclusive, adaptive, intergenerational, and lifelong sport. You know, for a number of years, we've been carefully assessing what it would take to fundraise and build a dedicated curling center in the Omaha metro area based on best practices, talking to more than two dozen curling nonprofits around the country, and with our national affiliate, USA Curling. Since 2021, we've worked with Matt Kalsovich and his team to explore a private-public partnership to build a facility here in town. And, you know, we're dedicated to fundraising for and building a facility for a number of reasons. Today, Exarban Curling is the largest nonprofit curling organization in the nation that plays on multi-use hockey ice. We have nearly 300 Omahans and people from Eastern Nebraska who curl with us regularly, including kids as young as six, adults, college students, and seniors. Our membership has more than doubled in recent years since hosting Olympic Trials in 2021 and 2017 with the Omaha Sports Commission and USA Curling. And in the last Olympic cycles alone, nearly 100 volunteer members taught about 1,500 people how to curl through our Learn to Curl, instructional leagues, and youth clinics. So today, we play at Baxter Arena. We have an excellent partnership with the arena. However, we have two big challenges in terms of our programming and fulfilling our mission. Hockey and skating ice is vastly different and actually very challenging. I liken it to trying to play golf only in the sand traps or the rough. It's like bowling uphill on a sidewalk with lots of cracks and ridges. It's just not as fulfilling of an activity, and it limits your ability to get better. The most problematic for us is that we are very limited in our ice time. There is a high demand for ice sports and ice availability in Omaha, and we have to regularly turn people away with our programming. So we have one fall/winter weeknight league that fills up in about two minutes. And so we have people from out of town in Omaha who just simply can't participate because we don't have the time available. We have to limit our youth program to a narrow window in January and February. We have turned down national events hosting here in Omaha, like the College Curling National Championships. And we turn away a lot of corporate and team-building events due to lack of availability. And these are events that help underwrite and cover the costs of youth and college curling programs. So with a dedicated curling center here in Omaha, we could offer curling seven days a week. We could double our capacity, serving youth, adults, and seniors from nearly 300 people each week to 600 people. We could host regional, national events, hosting 32 teams, 128 curlers, and bring people into town for multi-day tournaments. Moreover, USA Curling's leadership has committed to bringing a national championship event to Omaha if we were to open a facility at Tranquility Park. We could expand our youth and college competitive curling program and not only provide more opportunities for kids, but also more opportunities for folks to become competitive curlers in their own right. We'd be able to offer wheelchair and adaptive curling programs and provide more programming partnership for nonprofits to serve kids, seniors, and folks with disabilities. But finally, we're exploring a partnership with the Greater Omaha YMCA to utilize the facility in the summer when we melt down the ice from Memorial Day to Labor Day. So they would like to utilize the facility at Tranquility Park to do summer camps, so weekly camps, serving kids ages five to 12. So, you know, providing a space that'd be fun, safe, engaging, a place for kids to make friendships, and, you know, have, get a sense of accomplishment. The Y's leadership side, they would like to be able to serve at least 75 kids each week from the end of May through, you know, school going back in session mid-August. So we recognize that we have a lot of work ahead of us to fundraise and actually construct the facility. But we're very excited about this partnership with the City of Omaha. We see a lot of mission and value alignment with Parks and Rec. And we'd be happy to help complement all the upgrades and investments that are happening at the Tranquility Park complex.
Thank you. And I'll go ahead and thank the Parks Department and Nick for you, for working together on this project. It's exciting for me as a curler myself to see this come together. I know you've been working on it for a long time. And I agree, it's, to use your golf analogy, it's like really difficult to be good at curling, but not difficult to participate. And I think this is a great opportunity to offer additional recreational opportunities to people in Omaha, just as you described, and a great location too, in terms of our vision for Tranquility Park and amateur sports, hockey, skating, and curling right here, but then of course soccer, softball, lacrosse, all kinds of things we're conceiving for that part of town that will have a big impact on our city, attract more tournaments to our city. And you have to have your own dedicated curling facility to attract Olympic Trials and things of that nature. So look forward to working with you on it. Thank you. Any other testifiers on items 18 through 66?
Yes, sir. Mr. Fredson, Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson and Question Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. And I was hoping someday that Mr. Bagley would bring the Catania down here and gift something for those folks and take this opportunity to thank Miss Sally Rose Novak for some of the programs on number 47. Number 47, I like Miss Sally Rose Novak, but I didn't like the Jarrettal. In the meantime, I have the opportunity of those programs, Exarban Knights, I got to study heavy equipment.
So Downey, that's the...
Yeah, I'm gonna get to the point, Mr. Fredson.
It's a Navarro lawn and landscape.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But also, Y Street, I believe this heavy equipment is destroying some of the streets, and I think they should set aside some money for us to fix some of these streets. The mayor shouldn't have to pay all this money when that heavy equipment is coming in doing this. I learned that under Nebraska Royal Navy while you was in...
All right. Thanks, Tony. You're off topic, but I appreciate the point.
I know. Number seven, never mind.
All right. Any other testifiers on these items? Come on down.
Rodney Johnson, 6716, Orford Drive, Omaha, Nebraska. Property taxpayer, will tax, sales tax, just so you know, Mr. Milton. I wanted to be a proponent of item 65, award to the Omaha Chamber of Commerce to run the SEB program. But after talking with one of the directors at the Chamber, I realized that they don't even understand the program themselves, you know? And I would rather spend my tax dollars on educating the departments about the program, mainly Mr. Stube's department. Mr. Stube's department continues to fail to administer the SEB program in the way it's supposed to be. I came in here January 23rd and said the department had a 100% SEB participation, but they were trying to award to a contractor who was not certified. And to my surprise, they rescinded that award. And then they republished it and removed the requirement of the SEB. It's getting ridiculous at this point. You know, the law says we're supposed to comply, we're supposed to submit all of the contracts to SEBs. There was 24 certified SEBs at that time. It made no sense for them to rescind when four active SEBs competed on the project. So I would rather spend the money on educating the departments on the SEB program. Thanks.
Thank you.
I also would like to submit a letter to the clerk from the community. Thanks.
Thank you. Could you just hand it to her right here? Any other testifiers on these items, 18 through 66?
Hi, members of the council. Kalen DeHelyus, Director of the Human Rights and Relations Department. I'm here to answer any questions and in support of item 65.
Good, thank you.
I'm Susie Scarborough, Susan Scarborough, 1135 North 156th Ave. I'm here with 18, representing Piccolos.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Any other testifiers on these items, 18 through 66?
Larry Store, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'd like to oppose all of them, and the reason is, I'd like to see you move this to a different part of the agenda. Your readings and various meetings and things go so fast that the typical citizen that has a job can't get down here and read through all this thing before you even call it closed. Too many items on the consent agendas and on this for a person to maybe be able to decide which ones he wants to talk about, unless he's done his homework before he comes. A lot of people can't do that. So maybe rethink it, put it to the end of the meeting, so they have a chance to read about it before you ask them to come down and tell you which ones they want to speak on. And it's all over before they get to the end of reading that particular section. Just a point of, of a better flow to your meetings. I have a lot of time, and I don't have enough time to do all the background research on these to know exactly which ones I want to, for sure. A lot of people don't have time at night to see the attached. So maybe you should have a little discussion. And then, in regards to today, now, a couple of these things appear to be more of presentations than they are a citizen coming down to say I'm for or against number or whatever. Those should be earlier under presentations rather than a long dissertation up here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other testifiers on these items? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Skorsec, are you still sitting there? Good afternoon. Thanks for coming down, and I had the pleasure last year to go with President Festerstein to the curling competition down at Baxter. And I want to put my political hat, I want to put it on your head to see, is President Festerstein better than his sisters at curling? I want to get you on the record here.
I knew something strange was coming with that question.
I would invite Councilman Festerstein and his family to come out and really show Omaha what he can do on the ice.
This guy, what district do you live in? Where are you going to run for office? That's a good answer.
So you are my councilmember.
Oh, don't run then, no, okay. Thanks for coming down, though. Thanks, this is going to be great. And I know Pete's put a lot of effort into this and his competitive spirit with his sisters, we'll just let that unless Council President Fester wants a way in. So thanks for coming down today, and I'll look forward to supporting this. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. This question is for the Human Rights and Relations Director.
Hi. Kalen DeHelyus, Human Rights and Relations.
Thank you. I have several constituents that are tapping me or making phone calls via email, asking the question, what is priority as it relates to your SEB program? What does priority mean?
Yeah, thank you for that question, Councilmember Johnson. For the purposes of this agenda, I've received advice from legal counsel to stay focused on reach and the reach contract. I'm happy to meet with you separately and discuss the priorities within, within the SEB program.
So you're unable to, for the purposes of transparency, to answer that question?
I am more than happy to be transparent, and I think that transparency is of utmost importance. However, there's pending litigation, and due to that, I can't go on the record to make statements about the program in response to your question.
And just so that I'm not repetitive on each meeting when these items are coming up, how long will you be in a position where you are not able to answer the question regarding what is, what is priority?
It would be until the litigation is resolved.
And that litigation is with who?
I'm going to ask legal counsel to step in here.
Matt Kuzi, Law, City of Omaha Law Department. Ms. DeHelyus is correct. At this point, we are advising our client, the HR and our department, to not answer questions of this nature until the litigation involving Mr. Johnson has concluded.
Do we have an estimated time of when that might occur?
No, we do not.
Is there some way that we can put that in writing for my record so that I can share that we're not answering that question because of purposes of litigation? We're not able to answer the question regarding what is equal and priority?
The law department can put something in writing to you, but it won't be using your words, it'll be the words that I deem appropriate to be in the letter, but we can put something to that effect in writing for you.
If you would, because I, again, I would like to be transparent to my constituents, and something like that in writing would be necessary for me to share that information that we're sitting on, on the definition of this until this litigation is over.
Certainly, the letter will include that. The HR and our department has offered to meet with you to discuss the matter, but the letter will include that language as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Milton, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just want to thank Exarban Curling and Director Kalsovich for all the work both of you have put into making this come to fruition. You know, we heard about it a couple of years ago. We're trying to get the funding. We knew that there was interest, and I'm just so happy that we were able to get together, find the funding, develop tranquility. It all kind of came together, and I think it's, I'm a little biased, I think it's an excellent spot to put your new, your new facility, but it does complement Moylan right next door. I think it's fabulous about the potential for the Y and having the camps there in the summer so that you're using it all the time. There's lots of things that you can do right around there. You can actually cross this street and play golf too, if you want, because I'm better on the green than I am on ice, so I won't challenge Mr. Festerstein here in any curling matches. But I think it's absolutely wonderful, and I really appreciate it, and it just shows, you know, once we were able to get 120th Street widened, we got tranquility moving, we got the redevelopment, now it's bringing more development to that area, and I think it's great. So I just want to thank both of you for all the work you're doing and look forward to working with you moving forward. Thanks.
Thank you. And I had a minute just to think about Councilmember Bagley's line of questioning there, and what I do tell my sisters is that since I was able to participate in Olympic Trials opening ceremonies, I tell them I'm the only family member that's participated in the Olympics for curling, right? Thank you. There's no further lights. Is there a motion on items 18 through 66?
Second.
There's a motion and a second? Roll call.
Hug. Johnson.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Row, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Councilmembers, it comes to my attention that we do have the applicant now in the audience for liquor license, item number seven, if it's the council's desire to bring that item back up.
We'll need a motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider by Mr. Hug?
Yes.
And a second? Roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Row, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Next, we need a motion to suspend City Council Rule 9A to consider this item at this meeting.
Motion and a second, roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Row, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
All right. Back to item seven, proponents please, yes.
Pastor Rivera, Amigo Market, 21 Ocho Q Street.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents on number seven? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Motion approved.
So motion and a second to approve number seven? Roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Row, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item 67 through 72 are votes for the 2024 City of Omaha Charter Amendments for Qualified Electors to Approve or Reject at the Statewide Presidential Primary Election to be Held on May 14th, 2024. Item 67, an ordinance to remove Section 2.15, which describes the process for granting, extending, changing, or modifying the terms of franchises within the City of Omaha.
The vote on number 67 is today. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. I just want to remind everybody out there, we're actually voting on what, to allow people to vote on these items in the next election. We're not voting yes or no to pass these things, we're voting to put them, whether we should put them on the ballot. These are all amendments to the ordinances that were recommended to us. By every 10 years, we commence the board to recommend these things to us, the Charter Committee. So we didn't want to put everything on the same ballot, so we're kind of doing it on different ballots, also because it costs money to put things on ballots. So these are kind of some of the last ones that we need to get on the ballot to allow the people of Omaha to vote on. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights, is there a motion? One each. Motion and a second? Roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Row, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 68, an ordinance to men, Section 3.12, to add stormwater management to the list of functions and programs assigned to the Public Works Department.
The vote on number 68 is today, is there a motion? Motion and a second, roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Row, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 69, an ordinance to men, Section 5.21, concerning disposal of personal property from the purchasing division and purchasing agent to the Finance Department and Finance Director, and in Section 5.23, to provide that the city treasurer is a classified employee high through the competitive testing process.
The vote on number 69 is today, is there a motion? Motion and a second, roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Row, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 70, an ordinance to men, Section 8.13, to establish the process to provide for an acting mayor in the event that a public disaster results in the death or disability of the mayor and the entire city council.
The vote on number 70 is today, is there a motion? Motion and a second, roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Row, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 71, an ordinance to men, Section 8.15, to make clear that the members of a charter study convention must be 18 years old and a resident of the city for six months at the time of their appointment.
The vote on number 71 is today, Mr. Row, you're recognized.
Motion and a second to move the amendment of the whole, and Mr. Row, could you just take a minute to explain what that does?
Yeah, just clarifies some language. The original ordinance that's printed in the agenda, it says that this amendment is to make clear that members of the charter convention must be 18 years, 18 years old, and this amendment just clearly, just clarifies that and says that a member must be at least 18 years old. So, simple clarification.
Yeah, thank you. I think that is a good clarification. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Yes, Mr. President, we received an email saying that an amendment was added to this that we're voting on today, and was, and I responded by asking for this amendment, the revision of the amendment to be provided, what that entailed, the language, and the Law Department indicated that they would be sharing that with us now during this session. I have not received that information.
I do have a copy right here, I don't know if it was that pre-council or not, but it does exactly what Mr. Row just described.
They just added "at least" in front of 18.
Right, could I have a copy of that, please?
Yeah, that's it right there.
There you go.
Thank you.
Yeah, you'll get it back.
They will need it back. The official copy.
While she's reading that, oh, go ahead.
So will you be providing us this copy via email today?
Okay.
Okay, thank you, I would like a copy of that.
Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
I'll move the approval.
There's a motion and a second? No further lights?
We already had one.
Oh, I'm sorry, there already was a motion and a second?
Oh, sorry.
Earlier, yeah. There are no further lights, though. Roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Row, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 72, an ordinance to men, Section 5.17, to increase the monetary amount for contracts which require city council action from $20,000 to $50,000.
The vote on number 72 is today, proponents please. Public hearing was already held, is there a motion? There's a motion and a second to approve, roll call.
Hug, Johnson, Melton, Row, Bagley, Harding, Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 73, a resolution to approve the bid in the amount of $75,997 to DMS Inc. for a new, for new construction of sidewalks at Martin Luther King Jr. Park.
Public hearing and vote on number 73 is today, proponents please.
Good afternoon, members of the council, Matt Kalsovich, Parks and Recreation Director. Excited to be at this point with this project as one of the items on our ARPA American Recovery Plan Act list of public improvements. This is a unique project in that we are in partnership with the Inter-Denominational Ministerial Alliance of Greater Omaha, who oversees this public space, and we actually have a partnership on the maintenance of the facility, and we want to use this ARPA funding to help bring the access to the facility back up to the level of being safe, consistent throughout the year. The number that we have here is just only slightly above what the estimate was for the city's part and contribution to the improvement of the space, and that will focus specifically on the walkways and the drainage and some of the things that have made it a challenge since the initial establishment of the park and the open space approximately 20 years ago now. So that work is set to start here soon, perhaps on the backside of this cold snap we're going to have here overnight, and when the weather is such that we can actually perform this specific work around weather regulations. I will address that there was a note of opposition in regards to some potential negative or lesser performance by our potential contractor. We went ahead and did some other research on our end with both some internal city departments who've had experience with this contractor, and some exterior partners that have also had some overlap, and we've had any concerns addressed on our side. We did have an initial interaction with the contractor as well around the time of potential announcement that they were the low bid, and they answered a lot of the questions that we had then about the specifics of this project. We will also have multiple staff overseeing the work. We have a normal project manager that helps us oversee work in the field, but we also have our very specific ARPA staff, who will also be part of ensuring that the work is done to the specifications of the bid.
Thank you.
Alvin McCruel, Pastor of St. John Missionary Baptist Church, 3912 North 16th Street, First Vice President, Inter-Denominational Ministerial Alliance, and Chairman of the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Committee. I stand before you to answer any questions that you may have for me.
Great, thank you. Thanks for being here. Any other proponents today?
Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson de Question Foundation, and North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. You know, Mr. President, I give you credit, I didn't know you had been to the Olympics, where the Rockefeller Plaza in New York, where I was studying, back in, when you was in, or no Rockefeller, Ice Capade, that's what it was. Anyway, back to the process, can you also attach to this program that these wonderful gentlemen are working on? Because I started Park and Recreation when I was, in 1966. Mayor Lay made sure we had all those programs. In the meantime, can you attach some of that money so we can do a research on 16th and Locust to put a toll bridge for Ms. Johnson?
We're off topic there, thank you. Are there any other proponents on number 73?
Cheryl Weston, 1822 Emmett Street, Omaha, Nebraska. There was in your packet as... Had stated? Was, yes, there was a letter, an email in there, where this gentleman, Adam, Andrew Adams, asked that the city council members would reject this because of the history of poor quality and service. And he gave the addresses, and he also asked if you would go by and take a look at that. I don't know if any of you city council members did go, but I did, because this is going to be happening in, near North Omaha, in North Omaha, and I am very much in support of this being taken care of, but not with this company and the bids. Here are the bids that were, I know you have it in your packet, so I'm not very good with this, but when you look at the bids, the contractor here, DMS Inc., I did do research on them, and I'm not saying they're a bad company, but they're more in residential. This is not a residential situation on 24th and Lake Street. It is more commercial paving and contracting. When you look at those totals, $75,997 is the low bid, and that's exactly what you say, being the lowest bid received. Why is it North Omaha is getting the lowest bid received? Today, you had three different items, 74, or 54, 55, and 56. You took the best bid, not the lowest bid. The lowest bid, we all know, every single one of you know. It's not always the best bid. Why can't we have the best bid? When I went and researched each one of those companies that were on your list, BM Contracting, Construction, Pave LLC, and Lenhart Construction, and Navaro. Navaro and Lenhart are contractors who do construction, or commercial, paving, retaining walls and those for it. And that's what's needed down on that corner, because of the problems that you have with the sewers and so forth. I took Mr. Adams' suggestion, and I went over and looked at that, and I took pictures. That top picture, there is that dip. That's just one of the dips that are in the whole area of where this contractor did the prior work over on Arbor Street and Martha. Another picture, there's another, there's another dip. As I said, there's multiple dips in that street and all that work, and any of you know that if you have those dips, that's poor in the driving, and also when it's in the summertime, when it gets, if you have a driveway that's there, you're going to have, where that water is going to settle, and it's mosquitoes, and that type. As I said, here's another picture, because there is multiple dips. This contractor is not qualified to do the work that's going to be done on 24th and Lake, or that needs to be done. Again, I want to stress, we want a contractor, we just want the best. When you look at, if I can get, that's what a good point, that's what a good brick street looks like, paved street. This is only one little section in that whole area that I went over and took pictures of that's really good. Let me show you another picture of how some of those bricks and paves were. Look at that, that's curved, that's in a street that's going east and west. There should not be curves in that street. In Mr. Adams, when he talked about, there were several where they left the puddles, or I'm sorry, where they left the debris and everything moved in, here's three, three different sites, this is just one, because they were all the same. That is what a contractor left. That is poor quality. It's not the best bid, you're just going after the low bid. This is coming out of the ARPA funds, so it's not like it's going to be coming out of our tax, well, it is coming out taxpayer dollars, because that's where the ARPA funds come from, but what I'm seeing is, if this is from those funds, why can't we have the best? And I looked at, as I said, each one of those companies, I did the research on them, and is, although Lenhart and Navaro are more expensive, they are qualified, they've done this kind of work that is needed on the corner of 24th and Lake Street. Mr. Adams also said they have contacted the mayor office about, multiple times, about these problems, and it hasn't been done. You owe it to us, the taxpayers, the citizens of Omaha, to have the best quality contractors. So, I'm probably, you're probably going to approve it, but at least we got it on the record, Mr. Adams, if you're watching, or you can check it later, but he is very much true. If any of you went down to Martha Avenue, Martha and Arbor Street, you would see that exactly what he's saying. These pictures prove it. I'm asking you not to pass this for this company. We need to go back and look at it, and have the best quality contractor for 24th and Lake Street. And if you look at that, that is way too much difference, and I'm going to lay a bet right now, if you were to approve this, this contract will not stay at $75,997. And I would like for this gentleman to come up and tell you, what is the clause in there for charges that have to be added because something came up and it wasn't in there? This is going to go up much higher. That work on 24th and Lake Street, it is in severe need, yes, and it's going to be, this $75,000 is not going to do it. I'm asking you not to approve this. Take a look, the pictures are here. Please do not approve this. I'm not going to pick, I'm just going to ask again. Take a look before, if you want to pass it, take time, take a few minutes and go over to Martha and Arbor Street. I'm not sure whose district that's in, but if you didn't go by there, you really need to go by there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other opponents to number 73?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Opposed to it for a lot of reasons, like this lady just said, and thank her very much for that. I pay pretty high property taxes, but then along came the federal government that takes money also, and then you guys want to go dip into it through ARPA, whatever COVID, emergency, whatever. You're using up more of my tax dollars that way. And right now, the federal government can't even pass a budget. They might close down the government. What's going to happen to you folks? And the money you're spending that you don't really have yet? This is not authorized by the people. This is not authorized by the people. This shirt, Uncle Sam is the people. We, the people, are pointing at you and telling you that you're not doing your job. You're spending money on something that's not going to be good work? For my tax dollar, I agree with that lady. No, if you're going to spend it, do it right. If I have to move out of my house because of property taxes, do it right. Now, what about clawback? Have you ever discussed clawback? Maybe you should today. I know you can do that. You can make an emergency and talk about it. Because if the federal government decides that this doesn't qualify, or that, oh my God, they're running for the money to help support a contractor out of taxpayer dollars, that doesn't qualify, and we want the money back from you. Who are you going to pay, with whose money, if they want that money back? So maybe stop and debate it a little bit before, in front of us, we, the people, because we're not really authorizing it. How many people in this room even knew about it? Very few. How many know about the work that's not qualified that's been done on South Omaha? I think she said? Probably very few citizens because you don't talk about it. Governments all across this country are removing citizen comments because you don't like what we say. But unfortunately, you've forgotten that you work for us. That's got to change. The Declaration of Independence says...
All right, Larry, got to summarize.
Yeah, I know, Pete, thank you very much.
All right, any other opponents to number 73?
Thank you, thank you.
Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. This question is for the Parks Department, please.
Matt Kelsevich, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you. Matt, can you address some of the questions and concerns that Ms. Weston has brought before us today?
Of course, yes, happy to. So first and foremost, I'll start with that this was one of the approved ARPA projects. We have been here before with this item as part of the list of all ARPA improvements. These are ones that were deemed worth investing in as they go through all review and criteria for project investment, whether it be the various type of city dollars that are available or something on the federal level, that review is always the same in terms of what is most important, what is most relevant, what is impacting the most people. So we have a physical responsibility that we apply to every process we go through. What I'll say about this project in particular is this is, first and foremost, I want to clarify, a sidewalk project, not a street project, so there are some differences there in terms of the kind of work and function. I would also recognize that in this case, one project does not define a company. I think we have testimony and we have anecdotes and information that we did in our research that showed that this company, who did provide the lowest bid, and the city process is what it is in terms of the lowest bid typically being the winner, being the one we identified to do work. If there are extreme circumstances and there is a lowest and best scenario, but in this case, as I recognized when I first made my comments, despite the letter of opposition, one point of concern, we did the other work that we felt was necessary to verify that this lowest bid was still worthy of identifying as the contributor to this project. I would also say that this, again, to highlight, a public-private partnership, I was remiss in not mentioning that the IMA group has, again, our partner here, an additional $75,000 that was awarded to them to contribute to the site, and so they'll be our partner in terms of dealing with any costs higher than the city allocated amount, as well as some other improvements and some other work, just to, again, ensure the longevity of this facility and ensure this as a public access location that will serve this entire community. And so we're already working with them on maybe the potential changes that might occur and with any project, whether it be the low bidder or somebody else, the cost could go up relative to unknown aspects of what was specified in the bid, or other things that we may embrace in motion with a project as being a benefit to the work or to the location or to the people we're serving, and we may consciously make that recommendation. The ARPA money, the ARPA funding is set, and we are coming down to the end and dealing with some limitations, so we will be as thoughtful and conscientious about any additional spending beyond the bid within the code and within the parameters of what we have available from city function as we can be to just honor what we have here as far as the bid is concerned.
Looking at the history of those paves there at 24th and Lake, how long did they stay in good condition before they went into disrepair? And, I mean, when were those papers installed? And, because I know that I took a look at them before COVID, and they were in, you know, they were similar to what Ms. Weston shared with us as it relates to that Martha project. That's where they had developed or over time had got to that point right there at 24th and Lake. And so I'm asking the question regarding longevity of the brick, and what is the expected outcome, lifetime of these payments being placed and installed in?
Well, as far as the history, I was not here during the installation. I think things were, as to your point, in a condition when we started looking at this project that was already identified as below standard. I might defer to my IMA partner to share a little bit more about the original construction and that process to lead us to the point of addressing this as something needing to be repaired.
Thank you.
Helen McCruel, the monument was in, was put into place in 2002 is when it was constructed. And it was constructed by Lenhart when it was initially constructed. And the place started to, due to drainage and shifting that took place approximately about eight years ago, things started to move a little, and it moved, progressed to the point where cement around it started to crack. It began to beget a little uneasy, and certainly with Nebraska winters, with the cold, the freezing thorn and everything, so over time, it has gotten into the current condition that it is in.
Thank you so much. I'm going to defer back to the Parks Department.
Matt Kelsevich, Parks and Recreation Director. I'll follow up on those comments by saying we have the information from what evolved and the description that was just given to you about when things started to take a turn and become unsafe and somewhat unfunctional in that space. So we have that information that we put into the specs to try and avoid that situation. Again, no situation is perfect or we can predict. I think what we've set up is that we would have a 20-year lifespan of what we're looking at of the facility, natural materials like brick and things will finally dissolve or finally have some integrity issues, and so there may be a time down the road where this needs to be reexamined, but I'm confident that, again, what we learned from the project or where it ended up, and what we've done to set up the spec and how we're going to work with the contractor we have and have the oversight that we've already put in place to ensure that this will be successful from day one, and we'll have that long-term success. We will have some recourse if things don't unfold as the contractor says they will, and so we'll keep an eye on those things as far as warranty and guarantee of service. Those are things that are in all of our city contracts to give us leverage to ensure that something reaches the quality and the expectation that we have in the specification.
So, the contractor, DMS, what type of guarantee did they give to us for this workmanship?
They've said that they'll back their work in construction through what we've agreed to. I would have to go back to the agreement for the period of time that they said they would. I don't have that off the top of my head, but it is a standard policy for us to have a period of time when that would be awarded or be protected.
Go ahead. My colleague is saying two years.
Thank you. And that is for any of the work that they would do without additional charge, but again, we're confident that what's going in here would be sustained differently than what was done before because what we know differently than when the first project happened. And that involves some drainage and some grading that wasn't necessarily maybe identified by the group or through our research, that that wasn't the way it should have been during the initial installation.
Yeah, because I had the benefit of work, walking through that area with an engineer, and they shared with me that the workmanship that was applied to that from the original installation was not of good standing.
A different contractor than we're working with here, right?
Right. And so my concern today is, is that we're not going to duplicate the lack of expertise regarding pavement at that particular area, that section, based upon environment and other things that would impact the shifting of the pavements. So I would ask that we, I'd need more information regarding what applications, what things have been put into place to assure us that we're not doing the same type of workmanship that we had from the onset.
Well, I think there's a couple of things at play here. First, it's not the same contractor. If there's any doubt about that, obviously, we're working with somebody else. Second, we have the expertise and knowledge in my office to put together the spec that we did that is about trying to solve those problems. And unfortunately, there's no guarantees in life. We're going through a process that's very practical, very appropriate, in our opinion, about the way to modify and repair this space. We believe it has a very high percentage chance of existing in the way that it was originally intended, and we also have the advantage of the lessons learned from the initial installation, and we've made the modifications, again, we believe are right relative to the initial work to make this a success for the period of time that we hope it will be, at least a minimum of 20 years. That was the original thought about the, you know, that was the thought about the original installation. Obviously, we had the testimony about the failure of that, and so we're trying to apply what we know to make this different.
And as we all know, that these were ARPA funds that we're, we will be doing the repair with.
Correct.
And the likelihood of us receiving ARPA funds, again, probably is slim to none. So it would be, we would all be good stewards in making sure that this project have a life expectancy beyond what would be considered normal, given the optic, the optics that generally occurs in this particular community. So I thank you for that information. I hope that you've taken all of that into consideration in this recommendation. And again, thank you.
My pleasure. I will add one note. Typically, our metric for applying investment with capital improvement money, and this was very much treated that way, is 15 years, so a projection of longer than that is definitely a bonus and a positive aspect of any project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Pastor McCruel, if you wouldn't mind coming back up? Thank you for taking time out of your day-to-day to come and share with us and kind of give us your feedback on this project. I would like to know from your lens, what this project, Martin Luther King Landing, what does that mean to this community? If you could share a few remarks about that?
Well, the conception behind the memorial was to give something back to the community, something that the community could have, that the community could say, this is ours. Although it is owned by the denomination of Ministerial Alliance, it's free to the community. We have groups that go there for events there on the corner. It is a part, it is a touring site. When people come to town, come to the site, view the site, because of the work and the life and legacy of Dr. King, people who come to town are interested in seeing that Omaha values what Dr. King did during his lifetime. And certainly, we want people to have that feeling, and we want Omaha, and especially the community, the North Omaha area, to be able to say that we own this, we own something that belongs to us. You know, just having something that you say you own increases your personal view of yourself, self-esteem, and also it helps with how you view others as well. So that is something that IMA wanted to give to the community.
And you are aware that I contacted Porsha, Porsha Cabot, Pastor Cabot, last evening to share information about this letter that we received and that was not in so good favor of this project or in favor of the person that we selected to do the work?
Yes, we were in a meeting last night regarding this project itself when she shared that information with us on last evening. So, well aware of it.
Okay, and I would imagine that you guys had a conversation about that and probably discussed the different aspects of you guys working with the city to arrive at this point, and can you share that conversation at all with us today?
I will, I will share that we discussed the concern that was raised regarding, regarding going with this particular contractor. And certainly, this is the contractor that was selected by the city, and we recognize that it's the contractor that was selected by the city, it's not the contractor that we approached the city with, but it is the contractor that the city decided to go with. And since the city is investing money, you know, initially, the 75K into the project, this was the contractor that the city chose.
Okay, and can you elaborate? Are you okay with this, or is the IMA in favor of this?
We are in favor of someone doing the work that would do quality work and who will do work that will last over time. And the city has come to us with the understanding that this particular contractor will do quality work that will last over time. So we are hoping, hoping that the city is correct in their choice of contractor. Initially, we brought the contractor of Lenhart that initially installed it and put it into place, and based upon what they did initially, what they've learned over the years, that was our recommendation to the city. The city chose to go with a different contractor, so that's where we are today.
Thank you again, thank you for your time.
You're welcome, thank you. And thank you to the council.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
Approve.
Motion, a second to approve. No further lights. Roll call.
Hug. Johnson. Melton.
Yes.
Roe. Bagley. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero.
Thanks for your testimony.
Item 74, an ordinance to amend various sections of Chapter 55 of the Omaha Municipal Code Regarding Accessory Dwelling Units, Fence Regulations in the Street, Side Yard, Garage Regulations in Cluster Subdivisions, Compact Car Parking, Automotive Washing Stacking, and Retaining Wall Regulations, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number 74 is today. I think we'll first have a brief overview by the Planning Department, and then we'll have proponents and opponents.
Good afternoon, Mr. President and other members of the council. Thank you for having us today. We're here before you for request a zoning code amendment related to ADUs as well as a few other items, which I will touch on at the end, but obviously, I understand mostly the conversation is surrounding accessory dwelling units.
And your name, sir?
Thank you. First time here, no. Eric England, Planning Department.
Thank you.
As you aware, as you are aware, in December of 2022, this body approved the Housing Affordability Action Plan, the HAB, for the City of Omaha. The plan identified five goals and with, along with 29 supporting strategies for housing. There are currently multiple teams working... There are currently multiple teams working on implementation of this extensive and important housing plan, which includes city staff, developers, housing advocates, and nonprofit groups. Two of the advisory committee groups have been researching ADUs as well as other missing middle housing types regarding potential zoning code changes. After extensive dialogue and work with these HAP groups, Omaha Planning prepared the pending zoning code amendment that was recommended for approval by the Omaha Planning Board on December 6th of last year. This amendment would greatly expand this housing type throughout the city and jurisdiction. The amendment would permit ADUs outright in 10 residential office and commercial districts while allowing them with approval of a conditional use permit, which requires Planning Board approval in 10 other districts. There are several benefits of ADUs, including utilizing efficient use of infrastructure, providing housing that responds to changing family needs, providing a smaller residence amid ever increasing housing costs, providing accessible housing for seniors and persons with disabilities, and offering an environmental-friendly housing choice with less average space per person and smaller associated carbon footprint. As part of your packet, you have received multiple letters of correspondence and support. Some of those individuals are here to testify in support of the proposed amendment. But to briefly list those, they include AARP of Nebraska, Nodle Companies, Matonic Real Estate Group, MOBA, which is Metropolitan Omaha Builders Association, Spark, The Home Company, and Omaha by Design. In addition to these proponents dating back to the HAP effort and other meetings that we have had with groups, I didn't mention this earlier, but we also had letters of support from the Missing Middle Campaign, Saddle Creek Corridor Neighborhood Association, Hanscom Park Neighborhood Association, South Omaha Neighborhood Alliance, Exarban Elmwood Park Neighborhood Association, Benson Neighborhood Association, and Leavenworth Neighborhood Leading up to Planning Board, whenever there's a zoning code amendment, we send notification to every registered neighborhood association with the City of Omaha. There are approximately 215 of these groups that are registered with the City of Omaha. A handful reached out to myself because I was listed on the letter as the contact, just reached out for additional information. There was no opposition, they just wanted some additional information. We don't send the whole proposed code in that one letter. I'll touch briefly on the other items in the code amendment. So includes modifications to, let's see, I think, five other sections. So touching briefly on those, there's a, an amendment to fencing, which would modify the height limit in the street side yard to six feet, but will require fence to contain openings of at least 50% of the surface area. So what this is basically indicating or would allow, when you have a corner lot, a 50% open fence, rather than being a four foot high within the setback, it could go as tall as six feet. This is an important amendment. There have been nearly 50 Zoning Board of Appeals approvals over the past two years that are directly related to this. Oftentimes, it comes up when someone has a swimming pool, which requires a fence, I think, five foot, seven inches, and they want to maximize the amount of their yard. The next section would be cluster subdivisions. This would modify setback requirements for structures within a cluster subdivision. There are not many of these within the city. But we have had a few instances where this has also had to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. This would reduce a front yard setback of a privately owned street, usually by an association within the cluster, ranging from zero to 10 feet, depending on whether it's single family or more typically a townhome unit. The next section would be compact car parking to increase the allowable amount of compact stalls allowed from a maximum of 40 to 50% of provided stalls. These are just slightly smaller than your typical allowed parking space. The next amendment would be to car wash stacking. There is currently a section in the zoning code that would have specific requirements detailing car wash stacking. This amendment would delete that section and refer to Public Works Department's Guidelines and Regulations for Driveway Location Design and Construction, which is where all of the other drive-throughs are handled, such as banks and fast food restaurants. And then the last amendment would be for retaining walls. This amendment clarifies the regulations for retaining walls in the urban design section. Circling back on the ADUs, there have been multiple news stories over the past few, few months. I've, I know I've been interviewed four or five times. I know one of the proponents been interviewed multiple times, Director Fensel has as well. There was some press also related to a state legislative bill. I think that renewed attention and additional attention have resulted in others reaching out and, and support and just clarification, so some excitement. I know that one neighborhood association has reached out and want city staff to come speak to their group here in April about ADUs. And I just want to stress that this is an important component to provide affordable housing. However, it is just a small blip. This is not going to produce thousands of affordable units. It'd be great if, if it could. I, I just don't think that's realistic at this, at this time. So, you know, there's many involved in the HAP group that were pushing to, to go even further with this and have it permitted in every residential zoning district. We are comfortable with what's proposed before you today, which is the low-density districts requiring Planning Board approval. This amendment is supported by the mayor, the Planning Department, the HAP group, and so many others. We appreciate your support. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Thanks for that overview. But now take testimony from proponents to number 74.
Good afternoon, President Festerson and members of the city council. I'm Eva Roberts, Director of Policy and Strategy with Front Porch Investments, 1120 South 101st Street. I'm pleased to be here today to offer our support for the proposed ordinance, which will create a new instrument in our collective toolbox as we work to solve Omaha's housing challenges. As you know, Front Porch is a funding intermediary combining resources from private and public partners into a revolving loan fund that's catalyzing innovative and community-centered affordable housing solutions. We've been proud to partner with the city since 2022 to match and distribute ARPA funding for the development and preservation of affordable housing. To date, we've awarded more than $27 million of the combined $40 million to more than 45 projects. And together, these projects will result in more than 1,200 affordable units across the city. We're currently in the fourth funding round of this partnership and expect to award another $10 million in loans and grants this spring. And by the end of 2024, we'll have awarded all $40 million for the first time and begin the perpetual process of recycling those funds back into the community as loans are repaid. So together, we are making progress toward the goal of 18,000 new affordable units we are projected to need by 2030. But to reach that goal, we need more than financial resources. We must also address the policy barriers that are making it harder to increase our city's housing supply. The ordinance under discussion today is one such step toward modernizing our policies and creating additional pathways to closing Omaha's housing gap. Smaller living spaces and higher density options can make urban living more affordable and more accessible. As you've heard today, ADUs can increase the number of housing units in the city while respecting neighborhoods' existing character. They also allow homeowners to shape their properties to accommodate their changing needs. For example, renting out an ADU as a secondary source of income, or bringing an older relative or family member with a disability to live independently on-site. This approach is working in other cities. For example, in the five years after the City of Minneapolis eased the path to construction of ADUs as part of a larger zoning reform effort, it saw a 12% increase in its overall housing stock. To be sure, ADUs were only a small part of that increase, but it's a good place for us to start. And given our ambitious target of 18,000 more affordable units by 2030, every unit counts. The proposed zoning change would simplify a complex approval process, help promote affordability, and grow and diversify our housing inventory. There is still much work to be done, but this is a good first step, and we encourage your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents today?
Hi, Grace Thomas, 610 Hickory Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Here in part on behalf of Mode Shift Omaha. Mode Shift Omaha ran a missing middle housing campaign from 2018 to 2022, and during that time, I personally talked to dozens of different neighborhood associations, businesses, nonprofits, and concerned citizens throughout Omaha. I had conversations with people who want to build an ADU, who already own one, who want to live in one, who used to live in one, who live in cities where there are a few barriers to building them, hate them, feel neutral about them, want their kids to build one for them mostly when they grow old. If you can think of a conversation about ADUs, I've probably had it with folks here in Omaha. I really appreciate the Planning Department's speediness on creating this great proposal. After the approval of the HAP, Eric's team has been really phenomenal in communicating efforts to make these more accessible to folks in Omaha. And Mode Shift is really excited and happy with the proposed changes that are in front of you all today. I personally feel that the lack of design requirements is a strength for these. Restrictions on materials to create single-family homes are not required today in Omaha, and cities without them report fewer barriers to construction, of which there are a lot. The last time I talked to someone in my neighborhood who was excited about building one of these, he said it would cost him upwards of $180,000, and that was kind of a conservative estimate. But above all, ADUs, you know, really help add to neighborhood vibrancy. They create more creative places for people to live. Lots of fun stories come from folks that already live in them or own them here in Omaha. And allowing for a wider diversity of these in our city will not only help be a drop in the bucket to our housing crisis that has been described here today, but also just make Omaha a more exciting and interesting place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Hello, I'm Todd Stevendak, 2339 South 193rd Circle, Omaha. I'm the State Director of AARP Nebraska. Can I first just say to Councilmember Melton, thank you so much for your PSA at the top about scams. I just spoke to one of my volunteers yesterday who had fallen victim to the, to the same scam, so we're out there trying to spread that word as well, so thank you for that. So why would AARP care about accessory dwelling units? I hear that a lot. If, when I had started AARP about four and a half years ago, you told me I was, would be speaking to the city council about accessory dwelling units, I would have thought you're crazy. But the truth is, what we know in talking to our members, as people age, they want to stay in their homes or the lowest level of care for as long as possible. And to do that, they need access to age-appropriate, age-friendly, affordable housing options. And ADUs represent one of those options. You can think about this in two ways for an older family. It could be the place where they're in their single-family home, and they build an ADU for a younger family member to live in, or a caregiver to live in, that allows them to stay in that single-family home. Vice versa, it could be a family that builds an ADU in their home or detached from their home that has a parent who is able to age in place there. Again, fulfilling that desire for them to stay in the lowest level of care and not to go to some sort of institutional care setting. I agree with others who have spoken. I don't think that ADUs are going to solve our affordability crisis, housing crisis here in Omaha, but they're a good, family-friendly option for folks as they age, and it provides an age-appropriate housing option for folks. We were really excited to sponsor an ADU design competition last fall, an ADU for you, which we partnered with many housing stakeholders. Our goal was to raise awareness of ADUs and to get some professional-level designs for these. And I think we were successful in both efforts. We had 20 designs that were submitted. We had a panel of judges who selected three winners and one honorable mention design. You can check out those designs online and, and see what they, they look like. So we appreciate the Planning Department's effort to, to move this, this amendment forward. We hope that you all will, will approve it to help streamline this process and allow for these to be built for age-friendly purposes in Omaha. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents?
Hi, I'm Abram Luter. I'm representing Omaha by Design at 618 South 11th Street. Omaha by Design is a community nonprofit that works to create a livable city for all. Our organization was actually really born out of the effort back in the early 2000s to create the urban design element. It was Omaha's first comprehensive urban design code. And so creating a really high-quality-built environment kind of remains at the DNA of who we are. But over the past several years, we've also become increasingly involved with efforts to create affordable housing, especially through our Affordable by Design program. And the reason for that is pretty simple. Your city can't be livable unless you have a place to live. And we just recognize that housing supply in Omaha, just like it has in so many cities, it just has not expanded to meet demand, and so many people simply can't find a place to live. And to address those supply concerns, it really takes an all-hands-on-deck approach. So we know that, like everyone else has said, ADUs are not the be-all and-all of affordable housing. It doesn't solve everything, but does it allow one family to create a unit of housing that an aging relative can, can live in in close proximity to their family? Yes, you know, it can create those options. And we think these types of incremental, small steps, you know, removing these barriers, you know, each of these steps is really necessary for creating, you know, a future Omaha where housing can be more accessible by more people. So, you know, I'm not going to repeat all the, the great benefits that people have said about ADUs. Also wanted to recognize, as it's been alluded to, that ADUs are not something that are new to Omaha. ADUs exist in our historic neighborhoods, and you often see these as, you know, the carriage houses behind some of those beautiful homes and neighborhoods like Dundee. And so this is just a great way that historically cities have used to create gentle amounts of new housing in neighborhoods. So we do support this zoning change as just a small step towards a more inclusive housing environment.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Policeman is 2709 Dewar Avenue. I'll be honest, pre-meeting discussion on this item was led by the vice president, and it kind of complicated it for me. I often depend on narration or, you know, like, so I'm, I'm going just to go off the, I'm going to go off the amendment. What I see is the amendment allow, clarifies what an ADU is. ADU, ADU is not for, in a, in apartment dwelling, and it's not for car washing. And it's for residential use. You're going to have an ADU to live in, in it. There's some exception for automotive use, and that makes sense. Another thing is that there is limitation how many structures are allowed as an ADU, which is one. Okay, fine. And you heard everybody else saying that's okay. For me, when I'm thinking about affordable housing and the design, I'm thinking about tiny houses, especially that the landscape for residential use, it's already laid out, you know, after all these, like, 100 years or whatever. So I think that maybe there should be an exception for an ADU that's small, and then you can have another ADU because they're just tiny houses in, in the, in the property. But like I said, it, I'm trying to follow the process. Pre-meeting was kind of confusing with the train of thought about this ordinance. So I'm looking at the actual ordinance, and it looks like you're cleaning it up, you're making sure that it is mostly for residential use, and I can agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? It's got to be to the topic of accessory dwelling units, right, Donnie?
The debate we're going to be having today, or can we make a point by making a point?
If you're on topic, you can.
Okay. I was trying to, sometimes you have to debate to make the point that we're trying to make. Like, for instance, Donnie R. Johnson, the Johnson and Question Foundation, North Omaha Concerned Citizen Foundation. Now, I understand, Mr. Festerson, you didn't have a chance, opportunity to go to Wonder Bridge and get, because they're tearing that building down. My whole argument of these great developers and builders, I think they're doing a wonderful job. But what I have noticed, my program, through the Keywit Program, the Doug Dell Construction, we had to take all those classes, Brooklyn Bridge and all this stuff, and architecture design. Would you have some of these developers and new builders who are doing a wonderful job in our city to start setting aside some money to fix the streets they're tearing up?
All right, Donny, that's not this topic. Any other opponents to number seventy-four? Seeing none, public hearing's closed. I don't see any lights. Next item.
Item seventy-five, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of purchase orders to Kamira Water Solutions, Inc., in the amount of one million, one hundred five thousand for ferric chloride to be utilized at the water resource recovery facilities.
Public hearing on number seventy-five is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item seventy-six, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use district development agreement for Avenue One located south of One Hundred and Ninety-second Street and West Dodge Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number seventy-six is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, DJ Hinman, one-six-eight-two-zero Francis Street. Part of the development team here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item seventy-seven, an ordinance to approve a major amendment to a mixed-use district development agreement for South Streams located southeast of Two Hundred and Fourth and Q Streets. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing on number seventy-seven is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item seventy-eight, an ordinance to establish a Class B flammable liquids storage district to be known as District Number B dash two-one-eight at four-five-zero-one Abbott Drive.
Public hearing on number seventy-eight is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing's closed.
Item seventy-nine, an ordinance to approve an agreement with Seventy-Five North Revitalization Corporation to construct affordable housing within a project site generally located between Burdette Street and Parker Street and North Twenty-Ninth Street to North Twenty-Eighth Street.
Public hearing on number seventy-nine is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, members of the council. President Festerson. Charlene Rogers, twenty-one twelve North Thirtieth Street, Suite two hundred, six-eight-one-one-one. I'm here as a proponent of the Affordable Housing Agreement. I would just ask that the council would consider this approval as we have already been a recipient for this particular project site for CDBG funding, and we would also hope to be a recipient for future funding as well.
Thank you. Congratulations on your new position. I think this is the first time you've been before us so far.
It is.
All right. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, any opponents? You're going to stay on topic, right, Donny?
Yes, sir, Mr. Festerson. I was just wondering, since Congress authorized me to go around and nosing around in people's business, and I've been noticing these cranes sneaking in the city and not paying their fair share of fixing the streets.
Not on topic, Donny. Are there any other opponents to number seventy-nine? Seeing none, public hearing's closed.
Non-action items, items eighty-three-one-oh-two, do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, please.
Motion a second. Roll call.
Hug.
Johnson.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Rowe.
Bagley.
Harding.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at three fifty-three.